I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:03. And we are starting with, I got to use this one. It's Matt's. Matt's the timekeeper. Yes, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, we don't have any adjustments. We do have approval of minutes for Monday, September 12th, 2022, the executive session at 4:00 PM. Same day, executive session at 5:00 PM and same night, regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion? Seconded by Amy. Awesome, all in favor? All in favor. Public comments? Sarah, do we have anybody? Nope. Okay. Everybody else is ready to speak, moving on, communications.
Yes, I do have a couple of communications I'd like to share. Last week, we received a letter from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASC, the Commission on Public Schools, and they wrote Principal Matt Peterman, Sanford High School Principal Matt Peterman, that they voted to accept Sanford High School's five-year progress report and to continue the school's accreditation. While the report described many positive aspects of the school, they were, the commission was pleased to learn about the formal policy on cellphone usage during academic time, the effective use of the two hours of professional development each week, the implementation of restorative circles in the Character Strong Program, partnerships with maintenance and facilities to help with scheduled maintenance, and then also evaluating the core values for the school while the process of reviewing the 21st century skills and rubrics, creation of a system of data collection and analysis for both formative and summative assessments, developed of common assessments by grade level and the use of professional development time for that. And then also looking at, yeah, so those were highlights. And want, they want to let us know that the Sanford High School is scheduled to host its decennial accreditation visit, and that will happen in the calendar year of 2028. That reflects a one-year postponement from the previous cycle due to COVID. So, the next cycle for the school will begin in the fall of 2025, which is three years prior to the decennial visit. So, good news for Sanford High School. Big kudos to them and their teachers and staff and students for working hard to address those. And then I have a second communication. This is from the main Department of Education. They let us know that a representative from the MDOE is scheduled to conduct an administrative review and a procurement review of the Sanford School Department Nutrition Department. They will be onsite in February of 2023, but that cycle begins now and getting a lot of information. So, just keeping people up to date on those communications.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, we've got the Scheduling Advisory Committee, the SPAC and Curriculum Committee.
I'll start off with an update on the Sanford High School Sanford Regional Technical Center Scheduling Advisory Committee. Our next meeting is this Wednesday at 2:30 down at Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center. We'll continue our work. We're now getting down to the nitty-gritty of looking at various schedule options and discussing the pros and the cons. So, I expect our meetings to pick up. We'll start with a meeting this Wednesday. Our plan is, as we look into the month of October, would be bringing a school committee workshop to help share all the work that we've done in that scheduling committee along with the findings and recommendations that we have. So, I anticipate that happening in October. We're also looking at setting up another meeting for stakeholders as well, for families, so that we can also share the work that that committee has done in also information and recommendations that we may have. The ultimate goal is if there are going to be any recommended changes, those changes would have to be approved by the school committee, and our goal would be getting that in front of the school committee in November, at a November meeting, so that we would have enough time to be able to put those implement changes in for any schedule changes that would happen in the 2023-2024 school year.
Awesome, thank you. For the Performing Arts Committee, I want to say that you should be receiving your mailings that show all the shows that we are going to be having this year, and there's some amazing things coming up. Everything from ballet to comedy to hypnotist to the schools doing Shrek. And they're also doing, what's the other one they're doing? Clue, which those are exciting. So, make sure that you look through and you buy your tickets because it's going to be an exciting season. Thank you. Curriculum Committee?
Curriculum Committee had a meeting recently. Does anyone want to update us on that?
Beth, would you like to?
I forgot my notebook, I'm so sorry, Beth. So, a couple of weeks ago, I met with my curriculum committee, which comprises of Amy and Paula. They join me at central office a minimum of two, sometimes three times a year. And so, what I did was I went over with them what we, what my goals were for last year and what I accomplished, and then how those goals led into this year's goals. So, now I'm drawing a blank because you put me on the spot. We discussed the implementation of Reveal Math, that this year is now K to 12, and my professional development plan and how we're supporting staff throughout the entire year during our ERD times, as well as our teacher workshop day. I also discussed with them the work the social studies department did. I reminded them that last year, we revamped grades five through 11. And then over the summer, Erin Berry worked with grades K through four to look at their curriculum to help them make it more manageable while still addressing the main learning results. And so, that work is done. So, I could, I can say that we've successfully sort of aligned social studies and math to this point. And then I shared with them that my goal for this year's work was to begin to look at the science curriculum, kind of like we did the social studies, to make sure that what is going on with the middle school and high school, there's a nice seamless connection and that we're covering all of the next-gen science standards thoroughly. And the same with the English department, getting them together between the middle school and high school to have some conversations so they better understand what each other is doing and how it will build on each other. Now, I can't remember, did I talk about anything else?
Health, right.
Oh, that's right, sorry, thank you. So, my other big project this year is working with the health and PE teachers and the school counselors. There's a, there's some overlap between the standards that the counselors and work with our students on and the ones that are health teachers and PE teachers. So, what we want to do is work together and identify who's responsible for what concepts so that students have the opportunity to learn as much as they can from the different, the different people in the district and not overlap, so that we're using our time more efficiently as we, as we help and support our students. And that will actually start next month. And then from there, we'll, we'll, we'll begin working on units. They want, especially the elementary, they've already explained to me in the health and PE that they want to begin working on some consistent units so that their assessments and their curriculum are consistent across the three, the three buildings. So, they came up with that one on their own, so I was very, very excited about that. I think, I think that's, yeah, covers the majority of it.
Covers it. Which is amazing, that's a tremendous amount of work. Just even saying that math and social studies is now, you know, connected from one school to the next, and it's amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited to see what, what you bring next.
Next time, it's on you.
Great job.
Okay, we are now moving on to superintendent reports.
Sure. John Paul is not able to provide a student report tonight because he has another meeting conflict, but he did mention that he didn't have much to say because we had a meeting last Monday. And so, homecoming is still on the horizon. That's not going to be this week, but the homecoming will be next week, and that's got a lot of people excited and looking forward to that. Field trips, we had a field trip today. The special ed department at Sanford High School bringing eight students over to the Ocean State Job Lots. That's part of their career exploration units and helping them with community involvement and career development. So, that's something that they've done in the past and will continue on again today. I did want to provide an enrollment update at our meeting as district enrollment for the Sanford School Department. And so, as we look at that, as of last Friday, we have a student enrollment of 3,204 students. When we combine that, when we compare that rather to our enrollment for October 1st, 2021, that was for those that were subsidy-counting students, that was 3,062 last year. So, that would give us a difference of 58. Increased enrollment, as we look at, as I mentioned, 3,000, yeah. 3,204. Well, the subsidy students are 3,120 compared to 3,062. So, that gives us a plus 58, but I would like to take some time to dig into those numbers a little bit closer. First of all, that, that does include, the, those 58 students do include 44 students that are in for our pre-K program. Okay, 44 students, remember, we've extended our, expanded our pre-K program from three classes to six classes up with that. And so, as of right now, we should have spots for 96. We have had a couple students who were with us who have changed their mind or moved at the last minute. So, we are at 94 instead of the 96. The other thing that I wanted to point out was this year's incoming kindergarten class was low. We came in with 204 students for our kindergarten class. That is low compared to some of our, at least last year, where last year's kindergarten class was 263. It also impacts us because our last year's graduating class for Sanford High School was 261. So, 261 going out, but we're only bringing in 204. Now, you still look at that, also at the increases in pre-K. We also have, grade one is up nine students overall in the district. Grade two is up four students overall in the district. Grade three is up 16 students overall from last year's October 1st count. Grade four is up 13 students overall. Grade five is even, even Steven, zero. There's no increase in grade five. They have the same amount last Friday that they had on October 1st of 2021 when that class was fourth graders. So, I've kind of moved them all up one grade. Grade six is up 18 students from where grade five was last year. Grade seven is up four students from where grade six was last year. Grade eight is up six students over where grade seven was last year. Our ninth graders at the high school, they are up nine over where our eighth graders were. I also want to point out, though, that we have that incoming ninth grade class involves our Acton students. We have that agreement with Acton, but those 15 students coming in are less than those seniors who graduated from Acton last year. Grade 10 is up six students from grade nine of last year. Grade 11 is currently up four students from last year. And grade 12 is down 18 students. So, when you look at us having the 58 students in, the 58 students difference between last year and this year, you can see where, last year's October 1st count, you can see where we dig into that. I do want to point out that as far as transfers into the district from last year, we've had 216 transfer in throughout the district, and for those transferring out, we have 133. So, the big day for us that is going to count for our subsidy is the October 1st enrollment count. And so, where we are, that's where we are now. The concern is, we may get a few transfers in, but typically, from this point on, what we lose are those people who've transferred out with that. So, the numbers are up, some people will see that, but when you look at the aggregate in terms of how that goes, when you start talking about last year's graduates and this year's incoming kindergarten, you can see that it's not, not the difference that everyone would be expecting when you're looking at the total numbers. That's confusing, I hope not too bad, but any questions that people have of where we are in student enrollment? I want to give Ann Lohr in the central office a lot of kudos for all of the work that she's done to help build those accounts. We are working hard throughout the district where we are working on making sure of all that paperwork that is required of people at the beginning of the year. We want that paperwork back. Part of that paperwork is the economically disadvantaged paperwork that lets us know if people qualify to be economically disadvantaged because that's another one of those levers, when you look at state subsidy, that can help us. The other thing that goes along with that is our meal benefit application forms. Right now, the state is providing free lunch and free breakfast to all of our students, but much of our federal programming and federal funding is connected to those meal benefit, the free and reduced lunch percentages. So, we're working hard to help get those numbers as accurate as we can to beat the October 1st, to meet the October 1st deadline so that it'll count. I say that now that if we have any of our listeners, if people have not submitted their economically disadvantaged form or if they have not completed a meal benefit application form, please do that in the next couple of weeks. And I will apologize in advance as we are going to be very much aggressive in trying to get those in just because that is such important for us. Remember, when we start looking at state subsidy, anytime your enrollment goes up, that's a big help in terms of subsidy. We have to offset because remember, the valuation in Southern Maine, the valuation in Sanford is going up. So, when valuation goes up, that also increases subsidy. That's why you're seeing such an emphasis for us to be able to put our meal benefit application and our economically disadvantaged paperwork in play. Any questions on that? Jonathan?
Amy and Jonathan both have questions.
I was asked, actually today, if the school committee or the district would ever consider rethinking allowing business owners who have businesses in town but live in outside surrounding communities that pay taxes in Sanford, have their children go to Sanford schools. And so, is that something that, because then it would help with enrollment, but would that be something that they would be required to do, a superintendent's agreement?
Yeah, it had those, in situations like that, it's not a business residence, it's their actual residence.
Right.
Their home residence, and if that is not in the Sanford-Springvale area, for them to be able to attend Sanford, it would have to be on an agreement with superintendent's waivers between their home district and ours. We'd have to agree to accept them. The other community would have to agree to release them. And when they release them, that subsidy would follow the student, but it would follow the student at what that subsidy rate is in their home community. It wouldn't be what it is for ours.
Jonathan?
I don't think your question was subsidy-based, it was just enrollment-based, yeah. Mine was, I think we've mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, Matt. There are a lot of parents who may have at one time filled out the subsidy application, but now everyone's getting breakfast, lunch and dinner. So, why fill it out?
Yep.
You mentioned being aggressive about it, that means calling people, saying, please fill it out. And the feds messed it up, right? They said, free food, but Sanford, you better get the forms in, or what? You're not going to get the money next year?
Well, what it was, it wasn't federal as much as our state did authorize free lunch and breakfast. So, that is a deterrent for people to say, why do I need to fill it out when I'm already getting it free? Our federal programming is related on that percentage. And that's something that as much as the main Department of Education has pushed back against, they're not had any success. So, that's why for us, we've got a waiver right now for that. That's why we are pushing hard to try to get, to make sure that anybody in the district who qualifies for free reduced lunch, we'd want to make sure we have that paperwork and that approval because that's going to be helpful for federal funds.
So, state, fed, just one pocket or the other as far as I'm concerned. So, they say elected officials, you have about 60 days that they'll actually listen to you, and it's right now. So, folks that are campaigning, that, that's a hot topic, say, hey, fix it. You're giving them free lunch, why do we have to fill out the paperwork? So, you have 60 days to talk to your elected officials, people. After November, you're just somebody that lives near them.
Okay?
Okay, moving on, we do, I did want to give an update on communication. We have Sam Bonzi, who's joined the school department as a communications coordinator. Sam attended our ATM meeting recently. And so, we're in the process of developing a campaign to get information out to all of our stakeholders about how people can get signed up to receive school information in a way that is not bothersome, but they can have access to through the Thrill Share app that's on everyone's phone. So, be on the lookout for developing that campaign. We're also going to be able to use that where we can post our information. We're also going to send out information to release to all the stakeholders about all the various ways that they can also get communication and information access, including beyond the app, that the app is included in that. So, we're going to put that campaign out. Also, people who have been watching our school committee meetings in the past, you'll know that we have done, we've, a big highlight of our meetings is sharing what's happening in our school district, in our various schools. We would have principals submit that information that I would share at school committee meetings. We're looking to continue to have that information shared, but it will be going to Sam, who will be developing a newsletter. That newsletter will be twice a month in terms of what I can share at the school committee meetings, but that's going to be something that not only there, but we're going to be able to also get out to all of our families, stakeholders and staff. But we have a number of people who may not have children in the district who still want to stay up to date with what's going on, and we want to be letting people know all the wonderful things that are happening with that. So, that's moving along. I anticipate somewhere coming down here in the fall that Sam will be presenting at a school committee meeting to kind of give an update. Right now, he's in the midst of his entry plan, getting acclimated on a lot of different meetings with all the various stakeholders at both the school department and the city to help with that. So, I just wanted to pass that update along.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to director's reports, we've got Carl J. Lamb, Margaret Chase Smith, special ed. What else do we have? Steve Busier, Sanford Pride, and Beth Lambert. Starting with Sheri Barron.
I'd like to begin by saying thank you for granting us this opportunity for Susan, Tracy and I to come in and talk to you about all of the great things happening in our schools. We hope we can do this, these fine people right here on the side show some justice. These are some hardworking folks. That's our staff of the 22-23 school year at Carl J. Lamb.
Just right arrow, Beth? It's not advancing.
It's a night of technology issues. Hold them.
I was just going to ask.
It's not the one I want.
Please hold. Just kidding.
Might just have to do it this way, I'm not sure.
Rather than present mode?
Yeah, I think. See if that works, Sarah. No, no, darn it. People think I'm good at tech, I'm really not. Okay. All right, there we go.
Okay. There we go. So, prior to the school opening, there was a lot of work that went in, as you can imagine. When you walk through an elementary school on day one, every classroom is highly decorated, but before that, a lot goes into the cleaning and the maintenance and everything. So, this is just a shout out to our maintenance crew and our custodial staff who worked really, really hard to help us get ready. But we also had a lot of staff volunteer time during the summers, summer days, mostly rainy days. So, that was good, and they took advantage of some nice weather. But another thing that they did besides setting up their classroom was attending a lot of professional development opportunities. And Beth did a nice job making sure that we had opportunities for everybody in our staff. We had a lot of CGL people at all of those events that I've listed there under PD, but I attended several, and I could say the same thing about MCS and Pride. We had a lot of elementary folks coming out for PD this summer. And we were really quite busy with hiring, and I don't do that by myself, that's done, you know, it's a team effort. So, we have been very fortunate to hire some fantastic people into our school. And so, listed there are some of the positions that we hired for. And then we were also able to get a lot of kiddos into our school this summer to keep their education going so that we could help to avoid some of that summer slide that you might see. So, there was a lot of folks still working this summer. So, thank you to all of them. And then also to help us get ready for the opening of CGL this year, we had parents and children come out and show up in what I call a big way. You can see in students Luke Levick and Grant Pear in the sandbox. They're not kindergarten students, but they used to be at Carl Lamb, they're CGL alum. They came on one of their summer days and pulled every weed out of that sandbox. So, on the first day of school, the kindergarten students had a pristine sandbox to play in. And we had some parents come and help to beautify the bulletin boards in our lobby and put in a really inclusive message there for us. We had People's Choice Credit Union come and make donation for us. So, we got backpacks and water bottles and school supplies. And a little girl, Kalen Coker, is one of our students who is the top-selling Girl Scout for her troop. She came to our open house and put out a lobby and recruited some new Girl Scouts to her troop. But in exchange for that, she collected all of those school supplies for us and made that donation. So, I'd like to say thank you to Kalen Coker there and to all of our parents and community volunteers that helped us to get ready as well. So, then on to opening days, we had, we welcomed grades one through four. And then while they were beginning school, we were screening kindergarten students and pre-K students. And so, we had those teams happening and families coming in. So, we actually had three opening days this year. And we had nice weather for all but pre-K. But it was fantastic to see the energy and excitement. You can see some of our teams have purchased t-shirts and they dressed up just on their own. But that just is showing the camaraderie, and amongst those folks are some of our new people. So, it was really nice to see how they've just kind of linked elbows with our mentors and our staff that have been existing and getting the help there. And then Assistant Principal Trish Leet had a great idea to ask Matt Peterman if he had any cheerleaders or football players, any upperclassmen that may not be in session yet, who might like to come and welcome our students into our schools. And so, that all of the elementary schools, we had high school kids come and rally them into the building. We had music playing and a lot of energy and excitement. So, that was a lot of fun. Open house was very well-attended. We had a line out the door for quite a while before we could get folks in, and a lot of smiles. We worked on that meal benefit application, so that was something we did in our lobbies. And again, the Girl Scout table was there, the Boy Scout troop. We worked on making sure we had parent dismissal information. But in the classrooms, we had children visiting their new teachers and also stopping by to say hello to last year's teachers. And, and so, it just was heartwarming, you know, to see, it's awesome, opening the building and having the parents in, we love that. And as you've heard, we have welcomed pre-K. They're our littlest Lams at Carl J. Lamb, so yay for pre-K. And here's a picture of our new pre-K teacher, Kendra Sherman. And then you see some of our families in a picture of her classroom. And then you see some of our families in a picture of her classroom. And it looks really long. She's done a great job of setting that space up. She has all the different centers that we have in each of our pre-K schools around town. And so it's just nice to see the equity, you know, amongst our three buildings and the families' excitement. So this little girl is feeling like a little timid, I think, coming in. But I've seen pictures since where she's just playing at the sand table and the water table and having the time of her life. So a lot of fun happening there. And then here's another family joining us. And then in the middle, there's a little guy who did not want to go on the bus for the first time. His big brother helped him to get on and he sat in that front seat and his driver helped buckle him in. And he still had a little sad face on and his teacher saw that. And she reached up and put her hand on the window. And you see the smile that that had. He and his little, his little friend behind him, that just was like, okay, they're good to go. Great job, Kendra. We've also had our first PTA meeting. We had twenty-two people, we filled our library. It was a huge meeting, we were very excited to see that. We had a lot of new families, kindergarten always shows up in a big way. But here's a picture of our first grade team with the sun shining down on them. I was like, I have to take your picture, you guys, this light come down on you. But one of the things we did that night was we went through the calendar for the entire year and we've booked dates. And I've shared those in an email with the school committee to make sure that you know that you're always invited when we have a PTA event at our school. So you'll see the slide in your, in your email, so you'll have those dates for you. But some of our biggest fundraisers are there. And then most of those are events that will be free to families just to get them in our schools, on our playgrounds, having a good time and networking and having families meet families. Because we've added a music teacher and an art teacher to our school this year, we have more opportunity in our schedule to provide professional learning committees, communities for staff. And while our staff are in PLCs, the students are being able to attend enrichment opportunities and some school clubs. So you see in here, there's an art integration with some poetry. They were writing haiku, haikus. And so there's an example of one there. And then in math, they were integrating that with writing also. And the students were thinking about all the different ways they use math in their world and generating the reasons why math is so important. We've also begun some of our clubs at school. There'll be many more, I'm sure, because our PTA supports many ideas, but so does our, our school committee and our superintendents. And so I'm sure we'll see more to come. But right now, we have auto, audiovisual club. And those students will work together with our student support team to put together the assemblies for the monthly themes that we do for social emotional learning so that kiddos will be involved in, in things that we normally are asking Sarah to help us with. So yeah, you've got some helpers coming. Kindness Club is coming back and they're just spreading sunshine around our school. We have a newspaper coming out that the children are writing and they're still working on their first edition. But one of my favorite little pieces of that is a cultural corner in their newspaper. They'll be highlighting a different country each episode. They'll also be doing a staff spotlight and more. But the kids were generating the ideas that they wanted to incorporate. And so I'm wondering if each edition will look a little bit different. But I sat in on one of their planning meetings and that was pretty exciting. We have a new music teacher, Hattie Skvodorak, and she's offering musical movement and chorus. So at C.J.L., here's a list of a lot of the things that we did at the beginning of the school year. I won't read them all to you. But much of what we do every day surrounds, around building relationships. And we just want to make sure that we're putting people first and taking care of one another and keeping student safety and social emotional learning at the forefront of all we do and the children first. So it takes a village. And this is just a little brainstorm of all the people that we'd like to thank. Again, I won't read it to you, but thank you for being part of our village. You know, it's not anything that we do alone, so thank you.
Oh, I do have a quick question. Sherri, I have a quick question for you.
Sorry.
Well, first, I just want to say that I really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
And I could feel just super warm vibes from it. So I appreciate everything you included. I just wanted to touch upon some of the things that, you know, might be causing some hiccups right now, both at the local level, in the news, as well as the national level, and some of which you have more control over than others. So I'm more interested to hear if you're being impacted by these things. And if so, if there's any specific support that you can identify to help with that. And the three areas would be busing, ed techs and school nutrition shortages.
Okay. So, bam. So bussings, we are, actually, Steve and I just met prior to this meeting. We are having ongoing conversations. So we're talking to our building leadership team and our district leaders on how to make sure that we are maximizing the number of students on our buses, but doing so in a, in a safe manner. If you know how to drive a bus, please apply to Ledgmere. We are hiring, it's on my school sign out front. School nutrition, you had a question about that?
I, I'm just following nationally and also locally that there's shortages, obviously with the bus drivers, with school nutrition, as well as in the classroom ed techs.
And we are fully staffed in our kitchen. And I really hope this is real wood. We are fully staffed in our kitchen at C.J.L., proud to say that. And then ed techs, we are hiring two special ed ed techs. And I had a conversation with somebody today who's submitting their application that has been substituting in our school and doing a great job. So we're hoping to have those filled real soon. But we are definitely able to get through the day in a safe manner. All of those openings that we have, we have substitutes that come and show up for us every day. And they're doing a fantastic job. We've been working with them for a few years, so they're really familiar with our special ed programs at our school. And we're very lucky to have them. Yeah?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one other thing, one thing that I know that's come up is Sherri's also looking at the dismissal pickup procedures that are going on. That's always challenging at Carl J. Lamb School because of the school's location. But that's something that we are looking at to see if there's ways that we can help and make that process, improve that process in some ways.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else?
I loved the slide where, you know, the relationships matter because it's just, you know, and all the things, I wish we could go back to it, but like all the, everything that you are doing to make that just the culture and the climate of every day. Everybody is welcome with a positive vibe and welcoming, and I just love that, so thank you.
Thank you.
And a little shout out from an auntie that drops off in the morning at Carl Lamb. For everybody, if your child needs a little bit extra space, if you could just pull over, that would be lovely. Good?
Yes, thank you so much. Okay. Margaret Chase Smith, Tracy. I should say Mrs. Hallissey. Should I?
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
Hi, everyone. Tracy Hallissey, Principal of Margaret Chase Smith School. I know Sherri shared a lot already, so I'll just touch upon stuff just for M.C.S. We're really excited because we actually hit the four hundred mark for student enrollment. So we've always been a little under, but this year we hit it. So we're really excited for that. We started the year really honoring our teachers because we are very blessed as well to have all these amazing staff members with us. And we did an activity before we started the year just to highlight all their strengths. And we add up the experience we have at M.C.S. And we have over eight hundred and sixty years of teaching experience in our building. So I just wanted to start off with that for our staff before we head on to our students. So this year, it's our motto, every day, it's a great day to be a coyote. That's how we start our day. We say it every day as the kids come in. And just kind of looking at this, before school started, we actually reached out to a lot of students that transferred in. So we had a lot of students in grades one through four that were new to our building. So we completed, Mr. Bissin and I, sixteen student tours with families. Really reaching out one-on-one, trying to get to know them and build relationships with them, find out where they're moving from, how could we support them and get them engaged. And so we immediately were able to get them into lunch bunch groups. So we have six of those groups going right now too with our new coyotes, we call them, just to build new relationships. We started the year with open house, same thing, we were around the block. Mr. Bouzier was a little nervous pacing, hoping we could speed up the line a little bit. We tried our best. It's just because we were really excited. We had a scavenger hunt that families came in and were able to explore through our building because they weren't able to do that last year as much with our masks. So that was really exciting to see our new building. We also collected a hundred and fifteen of those meal benefit forms you were talking about. We worked really hard, our title one staff did that. So that's why we had that long line. And we gave away thirty books to kids that day, just for completing different activities. So it was really a great night. And it was warm again, just to remind everyone. It's really, really warm that evening, so we are thankful. Also, same thing, first day, Mr. Peterman sent over some cheerleaders and field hockey players just to greet the kids out front. They were really excited to enter. It was really nice opening without their masks for the first time in several years and seeing those smiles. So just remembering that. We started with our first assembly ever, having everyone together in the gym, grades K to four. So we were really excited for that. We kicked off our assembly that first week. And we really wanted to recognize the kids that worked hard in the summer, so we gave away certificates to all the kids that came in over the summer and attended summer programming, because that's really important, that they worked hard in July. We also gave away ten backpacks to kids filled with supplies. So the kids were really excited to win that. And we just recognized a lot of kids that were doing the right thing in that first assembly of the year. So we're really excited to talk about our coyote mascot that we have. So our motto this year is many dens, one pack. Each year we change. So if you go around our building, you'll see all the dens on the floor. But every day, I talk about how we are one packed together as one school. And so this is one of our school culture and climate goals, is to work on this. As you know, the students voted for the coyotes last year. And at the open house, they voted for a name, so meet Chase. Chase is our new mascot. We're really excited for the kids, we're so excited. He took so many photos at open house. And it was really hot that evening, so I felt really bad for him here. But he's appeared in our back to school videos, he's coming to all of our assemblies, all of our events coming up. So we're really excited for Chase because the kids just get so pumped to be with him. They've, students have already ordered that night, they put in their orders for our first T-shirts of the year. So we're already getting our coyote gear out there and just seeing all the kids excited with their gear on. So that, we'll have our first assemble, Spirit Day coming up, we'll talk about. These are our den ambassadors. So youth leadership is really important as we go up through the upper grades. And we're starting with fourth graders. These are thirteen students who applied last year as third graders to be den ambassadors this year. They help us with everything. They helped us with pre-K, getting kids to buses. They help kids in the morning greet them, smiles, high fives, help out at assemblies, sitting with some of our kindergarten and first grade students. They do a lot there, they hop out, they do our morning announcements. So that student engagement piece, which is one of our goals, that's one of the things we're working on. We also are starting in October, Mr. B. and I are doing bowling club on Tuesday afternoons if you want to come to Bowl of Alma and join us. We're going to be doing that. We also have ukulele club going in chorus with Miss Hastings. And we have a special art club with Miss Lowen Grover all during the day because we noticed some of our kids can't stay after. So those are going to be bedded during the day for some of our kids. So those are all starting. We've had to fill out applications for it, which is really nice, showing the reasons why they want to be part of those clubs. Social emotional learning, as you know, is a huge focus the first couple of weeks of school. This year, we've really invested time on creating Zen dens in every classroom in our building. So if you see it in those photos, those are students going to safe areas in the room where they feel comfortable to take a break and advocate for space. And also, we have a new school counselor, Miss Maggie Owens. So we're really excited to be working with her. And as she, we're getting going, you can see some of our students are starting with, we're doing a lot of yoga to start our day. So we're also taking mindful reset breaks, just taking the time. A lot of breathing exercises, getting kids ready back in the space for school. One thing we're really excited for, last year, Mr. B. and I really went through and dove through the data on behavior referrals last year because it was really difficult, right, transitioning. So we're introducing positive referrals this year. And basically, any time of the day, a teacher fills out one of those gold forms and brings it down to the office and make a really big deal about it and read it over the intercom. And the students walk away with some pride and they're added to our keeping track of our pack bulletin board. So we've done those already, we already have twenty-five of those within a couple of weeks. We still have our Friday recognition awards, our mighty cool student awards for all week, but this is like small chunks of time because some students can be really successful in small chunks and we want to honor that. And then our classrooms are all doing positive reinforcement systems, different celebrations, as you can see up there as well, examples of them working hard together as a class, staying positive and recognizing that. So our theme for the month is respect. Remember, each month we have a theme. So we're working with students on respecting themselves, respecting each other, respecting property, respecting feelings. We kicked off our mentor text as a little spot of respect. So every day, as you can see in the middle, we have posters throughout our building where students can earn little stickers, little spots of respect. And every time they earn one, they get excited and they come down and put it on these posters throughout our building. And we challenged our coyotes to earn, you know, several hundred by our next assembly. So we're going to count next Friday and see if they made that challenge. But they've been working really hard on showing as much acts of respect as they can this first month. And as you know, we're working on our, on our quiet coyote signal throughout the building just to show respect as well for the, the volume noise. And also like Sherri showcased, our pre-K has brought so much joy to our building. We call them our pups. Our sixteen new pups have joined us. And as you can see in the middle, we have Banny Devine and Sharon Bonano. And then this thing also helps out as well during the day. The students have already jumped in, they're already learning how to, their center's around classroom, like how to share materials, how to ask for help, how to clean up, how to work together. It's impressive how quickly they adapted and jumped right in. And as you can see, they're really engaged in learning. They're working on math in some of the photos. They were measuring the length of their shoes using cubes and clips. And then, you know, I would come in and they would compare how big my shoe is compared to their shoe. It's just impressive, the conversation they have and the dialogue and the math vocabulary they're using already. So it's great that we're having these four-year-olds come in and start their educational career early. It's also great to come in the afternoon, a little M.V.S.A. during their siesta time, their nap time. They could pass out through anything on a mat. And I just want to join them, but I can't. So anytime you want to come join in the fun, it's, we'll bring smiles to your face. Just moving ahead for the rest of the year, just to give you a heads up, we are dedicating our gym in honor of Mr. Rupens within the next month. So we have that in place and we're working the legacy committee, so that's something that will work with our students. And then we have our first Spirit Day next Friday for Mr. Peterman High School. All the athletes, we're doing a Spartan Coyote Red Day to honor them for their homecoming. And Susan will talk a little bit about our PTA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Jen.
I have the same question, so.
Yeah.
Buses, ed techs and school nutrition, just so how can we let support?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually had to change our pickup route this year, but I think it's going really well. So we used to use our fire road behind our building to help. That's no longer an option. So we've reused every ounce of our parking lot as creative as possible around the side of our building. I think that's helped a lot, being outside. Parents are really getting the swing of it, so I think parent pickup has gone well. Pre-K is out front, so that helps as well if they have time to unbuckle. We have dedicated spots for them, so I think that's going well. Buses, right, we're, we share buses between some of our schools. They pick up sometimes at Susan's school or they pick up at Sherri's school and they come to our school. Some days are later than others. But we're outside staged, you know, Mr. B. and I trying to get that loaded up and, and trying to help speed that up a little bit. Some days are better than others, but you know, traffic out on two oh two has been a big issue. We've had some accidents which have played into it too. But we just keep trying our best and the kids are great. Parents, you know, will call us and we'll try to communicate with them what's happening at the time. And currently, we're, we're one ed tech away from full staff, but we're trying really hard. We're hoping that nominations and that will go through. And we are fully staffed in our cafeteria, so we're lucky as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I love all the little dots.
Very exciting.
I think that's great. Love the whole, dun, dun, dun.
All of it. Susan Inman.
I don't have any pictures to show you. Like Tracy and Sherri said, we have a fantastic staff at Pride, just like all of Sanford, so. staff at Pride, just like all of Sanford. So, and thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you. At Pride, with our classrooms, we have 21 classrooms. Our enrollment this year is 357. That's 21 classrooms. That includes three self-contained behavior classrooms. And we are, we have two pre-Ks in my building. So that's been very interesting. In addition, our classrooms, this year and last year, we have two sets of classrooms that are looping classrooms. So we have a K and a one classroom that loops, and we have a three and a four classroom that loops. So looping is an opportunity for children to have the same teacher for two years. So we're in the second year of the children having the same teacher in their second year. So we're looking forward to seeing if there's any changes in academic data compared to their peers who are with different teachers this year. So kind of doing an action research project on that. We're also fortunate that we have two of our kindergarten classrooms that are piloting the K for Me curriculum this year. That's supported by the Department of Education. It's an interdisciplinary, whole-child focus instructional program, adopted from Boston Public Schools Focus on K2 Curriculum. The K for Me supports kindergarten students' learning and development in literacy, language, science, engineering, social studies, arts, and social emotional realms. The program integrates research-based instructional practices aligned to main learnings results, while it builds children's agency as learners and citizens. Through its intentional and connected design, K for Me engages student thinking and doing around a variety of topics, utilizing developmentally appropriate practices. We have three teachers in the district this year, two in my school, one at MCS that went to the training this year in August. Very similar to the pre-K for Me curriculum that we're doing in our four-year-old program. So really excited to see what this does in our kindergarten classrooms. As Tracy and Sheri said, our open house was phenomenal. I think we probably did 98%. I walked around after classrooms and there were very few folders left on desks. So that was, and it was hot. But, no, that's the way it is. First three weeks of school, we've had our two fire drills. I think we're having a lockdown tomorrow. We also are very grateful to have our service dog program continue to grow at Pride. We have a new dog that's joined us in the spring, and he's back with us this fall. His name's Bentley. He joined us in the spring, and he's spent time in the kindergarten and third grade classrooms. If you go to our website, there's a picture of him. He did his latest painting. Our custodians weren't too happy about the paw prints, but they washed off, so it worked out okay. And we also have four, in addition with Bentley, we have four other service dogs that are in our building that do specific roles with our guidance, social worker in our self-contained classrooms. We're fortunate again this year as well. Prior to the pandemic, we had foster grandparents in our building. This year, we have four. We have one in our K1 looping classroom. We have one in our third, fourth grade looping classroom, and the other two are serving in our first grade classrooms. And they're just a joy to have, just another generation of adults to have in our building. Children who may not see their grandparents on a regular basis, it's really nice to have them in the buildings. They've been great. Like Tracy's school, we also do student leaders. Each year, the former leaders who, so our third graders from last year are now fourth graders. So their job is to recruit new third and fourth graders. And we're starting to do that now. We're going to do that this week. They have a presentation. The students have to apply to be on the leadership team. They have to answer two questions. And then the leaders who are currently with us go through a process with Mrs. Daley and I to select them. In addition to that, they have to have a teacher recommendation, and they have to have their parent approval to be part of student leadership. Some of the things we did last year that were really successful with the student leaders was the leaders volunteered their time at kindergarten recess and lunch. That was quite a fee. But they did it because they really wanted to help the kiddos, that was a big class, learn how to play safely outside and include people. And they're willing to do that again this year. So we're going to do that. We also made some menu changes on our menu last year with the help of our team leader in the kitchen. We did a little choice about what are the best foods that we like, and the kids got to design their menus. We're going to do that again this year. And the student leaders, as Tracy had said, they also design the spirit weeks in our school. Just like Tracy and Sheri had mentioned, we are going to start our after-school clubs at Pride pretty soon. We have a traditional homework, skill-based club that we always run for the third and fourth graders. We're hoping to run our drama club like we did last year. And we're also hoping to run a STEM option as well. We're fortunate at Pride to have a greenhouse. And our health teacher, this is her second year with us, Alex Mai, she continues to use that in her curriculum to teach the children the importance of where does our food come from? And all those pieces that, that's really important to teach children about food. And as Tracy said, our PTA continues to be combined with MCS. Our block party is this Friday. Learner Shine, 5:00 to 7:30. And I just want to give a shout out to our PTA group because they are a mighty group. And they're just wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Jen does.
Same question. Are you having any challenges with your staffing, with the busing, ed techs?
Our buses fluctuate even, you know, between, our last bus arrives like 3:35 to 3:40, fluctuates in there. We are fully staffed and very fortunate. We are working to try to secure another person in our kitchen, just because we have two pre-K classrooms. And that's stretching our lunch team a little bit because pre-K lunch and breakfast is very different than a regular K to four lunch. So we're hoping to add another person.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I just say that it's just so amazing to hear all of the things that you are doing? I mean, it just warms the heart. I want to go back and be in elementary school again, so I can go to all the schools. I'm serious. It's just wonderful work. Thank you so much. Jonathan?
I'll give Jen credit. She whispered in my ear, why would anybody want to leave elementary school? I was thinking the same thing, the warm vibes. It's like what you're presenting to us is, I think, the reason we're all on the school committee. So I've always said, why don't we put more emphasis on elementary-grade teachers and resources? Because it does get more difficult for us when it, later in the K-12 program. A couple of comments that all of you, I love the idea of the, I remember the graduates go through the schools, I believe, late. So to have the high school students in your schools early in the year is great. Maybe a couple other times during the year for reinforcement, I think is cool. I like the cultural club, I think is, we need to be doing more of that somehow, some way. Breathing exercises, can I come to that? The fact that you recognize your staff as being fantastic, I don't know who said it, but I suspect you could all say that because that's why, you're all there for the right reason. Looping, I know our kids many years ago at Edison had looping, and I thought that was really a great program for, maybe not for everybody. But when I reviewed the crisis plan, I thought, oh my, never mind the wellness program. I mean, I don't know how you manage the crisis plan and run a school. But it reminds me, I don't know what it's like to run an aircraft carrier either, but I suspect they're very similar. Service dogs, that's just cool. Foster grandparents, I might sign up for that soon. When you said the menu redesign, that gets to the student wellness thing. You know, you may all do, you're required to do certain things for wellness as far as food. But what students eat outside of school is what you can't control. So I think the more education we can stress in school that you shouldn't be eating that when you leave school is, I don't know how you balance that. But great presentation by all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jonathan? Okay. All right. Stacy Bissell, it's your turn.
Do you have the music on this?
Yes, for the dance, yes.
Jonathan?
These lights, sorry, really bother my eyes. So if I'm squinting and taking my glasses on and off, I can't figure out which way I see best. So tonight's presentation, really my understanding is specific to the bridge. That's, I mean, I can answer other questions about special education. But I did want to talk about our bridge program and how it's going so far. I think the first thing that I would say is that the team, so this is our 11th year of the program, our first year expanding to service grades two to 12. And the other team had been together for 10 years. And so you're bringing in other members. And there was a part of me that, truth be told, was just a little nervous about how all of that was going to go because some of the people that we've hired have a very different area of expertise than we've had. It's a great learning experience. And what I found out is that I shouldn't have been worried. Because I got up there the first day, when they were moving all the boxes and stuff, and I had a couple meetings and I went in there, and I saw the staff all in the one room that's air-conditioned at the top of Willard School. And they had already set up a group text, which I need you to know goes off until like 10:30 every night. And we're already figuring stuff out. And so it just is a reminder that there are people drawn to this field are really special beings, and the dedication that they give to the kids and to each other. So the first couple of days, we started off with professional development. And there are just some aspects of the bridge program where there's very specific professional development that needs to be done in order for it to be successful. And so we introduced the step ladder of group dynamics. We're a team, and these are difficult kids at times. And so we've got to make sure that we have ourselves in check and understand the step ladder for group dynamics. So if you don't have safety and trust, you can't get to meeting your goal, and you go up and down the ladder. And that was a big piece. We also introduced the leadership wheel because you want people on your team to fill the wheel. So you want people who are more north, which are called warriors, and so they're the ones that are really task-oriented. Then you have people in the south that do things much more with relationship-based. So you want that wheel filled. So there's an activity that we did. And I was very lucky because it was completely full. And that was great to see. That all led into our development of our staff code of cooperation. And I won't go through the whole thing because there's a lot of it. But we ask our students to develop a code of cooperation and things that they're agreeing to do with one another. And so we mirror that for them with our own code of cooperation as a staff. And the first thing is, we agree to treat each other with respect, kindness, and understand we are all humans that make mistakes. That's number one. We agree to closing the loop and being open to other perspectives. Interestingly enough, the kids on their own came up with very similar things. So one of the things that our theme this year is that we're stronger together. And it, there was a poem that I had read when our graduates graduated last year. And that was the end of the poem. And it was about being a bridge. And sometimes you are the bridge, and you can lend a hand out. And sometimes you're the one that needs the hand given to you. And the bottom line was we are stronger together. And that resonated with the students from last year. So that's a major focus this year, is how do we all work on things together. We have hiring. I'll just, so we have four ed tech positions open. Jen, to answer your question right out of the gate, yes, yes, and yes, I'm experiencing, in special ed, Tammy and I, and all the administrators, especially with the ed techs. And Tammy and I have analyzed it. We've talked a lot with Steve and Matt. We're trying to do a lot of different things. One thing to point out is that we're going to do a job fair, where we're there, we're going to ask Sam to help us push it all out to everybody. But you come in, you fill out the job application, you go right to the interview so that there aren't, and we remove all the barriers. If you have a barrier with a computer, if you have a barrier with understanding school spring, if, you know, you have one day to be able to do something to see whether or not that provides more candidates for the positions. And we're also offering it, Matt made a great suggestion, so that that same day will also be, there'll be custodians and food servers that can be there. So we're looking at doing it at the adult ed. And they've got rooms, and Jane's been great about offering their spaces. I'm trying to think of the best way to present this information. So right now, we have four tuition students, two from Acton and two from County Bunk. Our high school is almost full. We have three classrooms at the high school level. And in the, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have seven elementary students. We have four intakes this week. We have three antiques next week. Like, we're booked till the end of September, which is great. We have our first third grader coming on Wednesday. He'll come and we'll do the intake and stuff. They'll meet the program. But have a really good elementary teacher. So some of the things that we are very excited about is that now that we don't have the restrictions of COVID, there were so many aspects of our program that were out in the community that we couldn't do. So this is the first year that we have rustic furniture building program back up. We have our boat building program. We're building a skiff. If you go into Aisha's office, the design of the boat is already on the board for kids to look at. We have a beautiful wood shop on the first floor of Willard School, where kids really have the availability of allied arts where they wouldn't, because public schools, we don't have a woodworking teacher, except we have a very talented teacher who woodworks on the side, works up perfect. Students in the last couple of years have wanted to do their own yearbooks. We have a yearbook club. And we have a bike repairs program. So we work with Nason and repair the bikes. And one of the things that students get is they'll get their own bike. And then we have wellness activities where we do bike rides and hiking. And all, sometimes that will be all the kids that are on a certain level or who had achieved a certain goal for the week. Friday, we're having a surprise bike riding trip, and kids get very excited about that. So our message to them is, this is a fun place. And if you aren't here, you have no idea what you're going to miss. And if we, that's how we sort of tackle the absenteeism. We experienced much more than we ever had during COVID. But that has changed just in the start of the school year. We had a student that has not come to school despite everything we did, and he has not missed a day yet this year. So I think there's a lot of environmental things that were factors. I don't know what else you want to know about the bridge. I can't see you, Amy, because that's right there. So I move over. But I'm open to any questions.
Questions? John?
Stacy, earlier you had mentioned, we have four tuition students. And when we did the presentation earlier last year about how much, what we could do to help offset the cost, what was the projection in the first year? Was it, was it four?
No, it was two.
It was two. Okay, that's what I thought.
So I want to be really clear, only because it's a really fine line with special education regulations. And I think the most important thing is, is that everybody in the community and everybody here understands that special ed law says you cannot consider the cost. And so if a student requires a placement that is, we do not have in our district, they continue to go out of district. That said, with the expansion of the program, just in the month of September, we are returning students who need a less restrictive setting to a savings of seven, 500, what did I say? Oh, yeah, 544. Oh yeah, 544,000. And then we have the revenue from tuition in addition.
Thank you, nice job. Because as you know, I've always been supportive of your program.
I know.
And I'm quite excited to see that baby bridge in there.
Yeah, me too.
Jen?
Jen? So the intake that you're doing this week and next week, you use the phrase "almost full." So do you?
At the high school.
Oh, at the high school, okay. So where are we at in the lower grades that are open? Like, what's the vacancy rate?
So right now, we have, right now, part of the issue is, is that that's where we're missing the ed techs. And so there's regulatory conditions under how many you can have in a classroom and what you can have with one teacher and what you can have with a teacher and an ed tech. So we have three elementary students with an elementary teacher. She does not have an ed tech. So she'll be taking those three students. There's a fourth one that's potentially a referral. And right now, at the middle school, we have five. And by the end of next week, we will add one, two, three, four additional.
Jonathan?
Hey, Stacy. Trying to mirror what the elementary teachers talked about. At your end-of-year graduation luncheon, there was a student who had graduated and has been quite successful in her life. Would that student come back and talk to students? Do you have folks like that?
We do. In fact, our, it was the first, so it was Thursday, the first week of school. And right before roundup, because we do roundup at the end of every day, two of our students that graduated came back. And they were in the hallway and stuff and they wanted to see the new program and everything. And we talked to them about that. And so we do have, we had another student that graduated two years ago and she came in today. And so we have students come back and getting guest speakers and having students and other kids come in and talk about what their experience was is something that we've grown and other kids have done it. But now that we have the younger grades, there's more of an opportunity because high school kids sometimes don't like to be told by a high school student who just left how to do it. But the elementary and the middle school will certainly see that message.
What about the high school-age students in your program spending time with the new, younger students?
Yep, so we're setting up a, we have a setup system where older kids can earn time to be able to go into the younger classrooms and read with them or join them for an activity. So, and the other part is when it comes to fire drills and stuff, I know that the fire marshal was really concerned about the second graders. And they're gonna go down a separate way from the other kids. But we're gonna pair them up in a buddy system so that the older kids are having a buddy with the younger kids.
Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you, Stacy. I, like, so I'm just, so with the numbers, and I love the fact that with all these clubs, I think it's amazing that the, that the bridge students have those opportunities as well. So I thank you for that. When, with, first of all, how is the BCBA working? Has it been beneficial with the transition of the newer students transitioning into bridge?
It has been beneficial. The issue is that the BCBA license is a very, very, their requirements are very strict. And so there's a particular form that needs to be signed to give them permission to work with any kid, whether they're in the school, the bridge school, elementary school. And so we've got no sign for the kids. It's part of our intake packet now. But getting it signed by some of the parents of kids that are placed out of district has been a little difficult. But overall, it's, we've set up a system that seems to be working and will work in the future.
Oh, good. So with, so going along with like the elementary, when you say the elementary, so the youngest would be second grade, you had said? So is that second to fifth or second to fourth? And then middle, is that just sixth, seventh, and eighth?
So we have a little bit more flexibility in terms of how things go. So overall, we have six classrooms. Right now, we have three full classrooms at the high school level. We're seeing that a lot of our referrals at that middle school level. And the elementary will probably be two, three, and four, although there could be an occasional fifth grader who just developmentally is much younger than other fifth graders. I mean, we just did an intake on an eighth-grade student last week who started today, who is 6'2" and bigger than any other high school kid we have. And so, you know, one of the things that I think is unique about the bridge is we can really look at kids and say, okay, where are you emotionally, functionally? And where are you academically? And then place them with classmates and teachers where they aren't going to be very different from those around them.
Oh, perfect. So what I'm hearing is that there is still, like, room available in the high school level because, and then in the middle and in the elementary?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I can, let me just do a quick thing. So right now, we have the capability of 24. At the high school level, we have 19. And they are intake scheduled. We have another student that transferred in who we have an intake on tomorrow. And she would have gone out of district. So that will make it, I think, 20 in the high school. And then we have the capacity of the same number at the elementary and middle. The biggest thing right now is, is we only have two ed techs in the entire program. And so needing to have, and it's not that we haven't been hiring. We have done interviews. How do I say this? It's an employee market.
Right.
So we have done a lot of hiring. And there have been a couple of ed techs that we thought would have been great for the program. But they get counter-offered by where they are currently. And so then they stay. So that's part of the getting past that hump right now.
So we have room to improve in the sense of the competitive market with the ed techs, is what you're seeing when you're trying to hire?
What I would say to you is I think that, because Tammy and I live in ed tech land a lot, I think the last three years, there's been a real concerted effort by the collaborative bargaining agreement to look at that and to improve that. I don't think those changes can happen all at once. And yes, do I think that there are things that we can do. We've already taken some steps. I think based on the feedback we're getting, Matt and Steve and Cheryl have been very responsive in looking at how can we change this to take that barrier away? Like the pay, how many paychecks they sign up for. I think that the biggest obstacle is really changing the view that potentially some in the community have of what a net tech does and recognizing their importance in the delivery of services. I think the other piece is different towns and cities have different tax bases. And they're able to offer things that we cannot offer. So yes, there's areas to improve. But I honestly think that we have done significant work in the last three years. And I know it's something that is on the radar of the senior leadership team.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Nope.
Is 24, Stacy, combined? Sorry.
I can't hear.
24 is combined for the elementary and middle school? Or 24 at elementary, 24 at middle, 24 at high school?
Forty-eight combined total.
Okay.
High school, and then it's 24 for middle and elementary because the way it's constructed, the high school wing can stay very, very separate. But the fifth graders could be in middle or elementary. So we have six classrooms total.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Good evening. I'd like to start off this evening just speaking to school safety. As we begin the school year, school safety has continued to be an area of focus within the school department, starting with strengthening of our basic security procedures that we have in our building, such as making sure our exterior doors are locked or remain locked at all times, making sure we're not propping doors. As visitors enter our building, making sure that we are screening them appropriately with the administrators in the office prior to allowing them to enter. And once they do enter, make sure they're signing in and making sure they have a visitor badge if they are leaving the office area. In addition to our visitors, we have reemphasized with staff the importance of them wearing their ID badges as well. So those are some basic security measures that we have just reemphasized with staff as we come in to begin the school year. In regards to, in addition to that, really focusing in on building those relationships with kids, building relationships with staff so we can make sure we have a pulse on the individuals within our schools. And if you see something that doesn't look right, make sure you're telling somebody. And you're creating that climate and culture. In addition to focusing in on those key areas, our school crisis teams have also all met. Our school crisis teams have reviewed their building crisis teams and looked at, if we were to have a crisis, what is our crisis response? Really looking at the roles and responsibilities of individuals on the crisis team and what would it look like with that? One of the major changes we made over the summer as we move into the new school year is our approach to if we were to have a violent critical incident. In other words, if we, our traditional approach to that was lockdowns. And so we have expanded our approach to lockdowns and the tools in our toolbox by moving to a framework called ALICE. And ALICE is a framework that can be used in schools. It can be used out in the athletic fields, in the grocery store. So it's really a skill that is transferable for our students and staff. And it expands on that lockdown approach to include, to evacuate and to counter. And so with that, we have provided training. Earlier this summer, we provided training to some super users. During our August teacher workshop day, all staff were provided with training through Joe Jordan, which I'd like to thank Joe for that. During our October teacher workshop day, we will be continuing that training with our first shift custodians, our administrative assistants, and anybody who else who missed that training in August. During the first few weeks of school, we've done our traditional evacuation drills. And as one of our elementary administrators mentioned earlier, we will be rolling out our lockdown drills. As we roll out our lockdown drills, we'll also be rolling out Alertus, which is an app that staff has that will help them receive notification. It's additional notification measure for lockdowns. But it's also a tool down the road where they'll be able to communicate with one another in the event that we have an incident. Safety committee met this afternoon and we reviewed how things are rolling out as we begin the school year. Things are off to a good start. We, in terms of the injury front, we have only had three minor staff injuries since the beginning of August, which is down from last year. And we've had one student, minor student injury as well. As we move forward, we talked about the continued training that's going to be needed in regards to our lockdown procedures, in terms of the ALICE training, continuing that with staff, moving into the building levels and having our SLOs work directly with the buildings to answer those building-specific questions, because each one of our buildings is different. Continuing to beef up our crisis response. So talking about, you know, what are materials we need for go-bags? Providing some of training to our nurses and our teachers in regards to crisis response. So continuing that training, continuing to keep safety on the forefront for students and staff. Later on, I'll have a presentation for the actual safety plan that will talk about in particular what are some changes we made to our crisis response plan. Any questions about safety? Pre-K, our elementary administrators stole the thunder a little bit about pre-K. But on Tuesday, September 6, we did welcome 78 pre-K students into our schools, with an additional 16 coming the following Monday. We are at full capacity, minus two for pre-K students. We have one student that we are in the process of getting enrolled, that we have the registration packet back. And we have one opening. So if anybody out there is interested in getting their pre-K kiddo registered, we do have one opening. We were full as we entered the school year, but through attrition, we lost a couple with that. The pre-K staff, school administration, transportation, food service, school nurses, and just everybody in the schools have done a tremendous job in welcoming our pre-K students into the classroom, into our schools. They have been welcomed. They feel, they look like they're part of the crew with that. We do have an advisory team that is made up of our administrators. Teachers and ed techs have been welcomed on board to this, to the advisory team. And we met last week, just to give you an update on how things are going. Transportation, our pre-K kiddos are riding the same buses as our students in grades K through four, except for Head Start and SRTC, they have their own bus. Transportation is going well. They have their seat belts they have to wear. It has added a little bit of time. We all lost a little bit of sleep, late at the weekend, in terms of transportation. How much is this gonna slow our buses down? But it really has, it's had minimal effect on transportation. So transportation is going well. We looked at, what else is new? Rest time. Rest time in our school is new. Rest time was an area that, as the year began, the teachers had to teach them the routines. Here's your mat, you pull out the mat. This is, the lights go down, the music comes on, this is the length of time. And, you know, all those procedures and trying to get them to sleep. Tuesday was a little rough. By Friday, about 80% of the kids were sleeping in most of the classrooms. And so that was nice to see. I walked through at about 2:00 and some kids were sound asleep. And I don't know what we could have done to wake them up. But, so rest time is going well. The biggest thing that's going, that's causing some challenge is breakfast and lunch. And that is not providing, it's getting to the classroom, it's how do you manage that? And I never thought of this. At lunchtime, a kiddo has a lunchbox that they brought snacks in that looks like lunch. And so how do you manage, are they hot lunch or did they bring their own? And so managing all of that. But they are working through that. If that's the biggest issue that we have with pre-K, we're doing well. We're doing very well. They're teaching routines and procedures right now. They spend a good two, three weeks teaching the routines and procedures. And they'll be getting into the curriculum momentarily with that. The DOE has reached out. They have scheduled some ongoing support for our teachers through, to follow up on what they did this summer. And that's gonna be provided by some teachers from RSU 57, who have been in this for five or six years. So they're gonna be some of the facilitators, as long as some folks from the DOE. And the DOE also, I'm attending a session, I think it's next week, in regards to the progress monitoring. They will be visiting each one of our classrooms three times throughout the year. And they'll be looking for, what are the interactions that our staff are having with kids? Because it's all about those interactions. And then they'll provide some feedback in regards to make sure we're meeting all the requirements. There is a grand opportunity that is available to expand pre-K. As you know, in Sanford, our goal is to have two pre-K programs in each one of our elementary schools and SRTC. And we are currently in the process of exploring that to apply. And if we think that's in the direction we want to move, we'll be reaching out to you guys. All in all, I'm happy with where pre-K is going. I think administrators are not here, but they have done a tremendous job. And I want to say, it's all about who we hire and who we retain. The people in the classroom are really, are making a difference here. And so just kudos all around to them. So if you see one of our pre-K teachers or red texts, make sure you give them a big, a big thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
And we need bus drivers. And John, instead of being a foster grandparent, we need drivers.
You could do both. Beth Lambert.
Hello again. My presentation tonight is just to update you on our summer professional development that we had this past year. We had about 200 staff members sign up for professional development. That included teachers- That included teachers, ed techs, counselors, believe nurses, joined book groups. Our professional development is open to anybody in the district who feels what's being offered will help benefit them in their, in their position. Some of the topics that we had, we did several safety care trainings for both administrators and staff, in hopes that if most of them got it trained over the summer, then they would be able to spend the time of those first two workshop days in their classrooms together. Otherwise, that would be the time that we have to pull them to train them. We had several book studies this summer, which are always my favorites. One was about productive math struggle. We had one at the high school that was very well-attended about the make or break year, talking about that ninth grade year. We had a lot of staff join us for that. We had another teacher offer a poor students-rich teaching to help teachers better understand and all staff better understand students that come to us with trauma or live in poor conditions and how it affects them, and how we can help meet them where they're at and help them still be successful in their classrooms and learning. We had training by Jess Folsom on executive functioning, which is something that's really been asked for by staff. So she broke it up by grade levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. We had some restorative practices training. We had George Conan come in and work with staff to help them see how you can move from circles being that community building, which is, which is very key and prioritized, to using them for academics, to introduce what you're, what you're learning for, for topics. So to show them the different benefits of that particular process. Dennis Wilson, one of our amazing technical ed techs, did some Promethean Board training for us for all new staff in the district. We had some K to 5 writing. And we also had several teachers do, reveal training over the summer to get prepared for their implementation. We also had principals hold building-level leadership team meetings so that they can get their leadership teams ready for the new school year. We had some art teachers attend some specific art programs camps over the summer. And so then what I'm doing now is during our ERD time is we're following through with some of the topics as we continue with our district goals and our supports. And for some of those specialized instructors, like our world language teacher, there's a, one of them is attending a two-day conference in October. We have some of our health and PE teachers attending either the main, it's called MAPRd, the Main Association of Phys Ed and Health Educators, I think, and as well as New Hampshire Health and PE, so that they can get their professional development. They haven't been able to go in person, and I think this is year three since they've been able to go in person. So they're really excited about that and to learn what's new in their discipline. So we're just kind of continuing on what we started this summer throughout the rest of the school year. Any questions? Any questions? Jonathan, did you want to? No, go ahead.
Going back to the curriculum too, all part of this, I'm going to, you know, pound my hand a couple times for the whole life skill thing when I think about the wellness program that we'll talk about. And finance, they go together. If you could teach kids throughout the district, mainly high school probably, the cost of a Red Bull latte and a retail ham Italian, sorry, I know I got that wrong.
He's hungry.
Energy drink. No, I'm not hungry actually. But the cost of all that, never mind the caloric intake, does, I'm in the retail business, we don't sell anything healthy. We do sell a salad, but not many people buy them. So people are buying bad food at a high price. There's so much, there's so much to learn there, and I don't know how you get that across to students.
And our health teachers do a wonderful job at explaining to students the benefits of healthy eating and how to make those decisions. They do right from kindergarten up through, if you look at their standards and their lessons and what they teach, they do a nice job. How do we overcome what they, what they absorb the rest of the time when they're not in school with us? I don't know how we do that, but we do our part, so we're trying. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to everybody that presented to us tonight. It was exciting just to hear everything. We appreciate it very much. Moving on to new business, we have, first one is appointment of student reps. Steve Bucier.
I'll handle this, give Steve a break. Prior to, prior to tonight's meeting, we had an executive session where the school committee was met for some recommended candidates to join the school committee as student representatives. A big thank you to, we had a large number of students who did express interest in doing that. Steve and Assistant Principal Troy Watts met with the kids at the high school, narrowed that down to two. Our goal is to always try to have some continuity with our student representatives. So we have John Paul, who is currently a senior, but we are recommending that we're going to be adding two students from the junior class to be student representatives on the school committee. And so the recommendation would be, that we're putting forward to tonight, is to approve Aiden Gendron and Emma Adawadkar as student representatives to join the school committee. Open to anyone who wants to make that motion.
I make the motion to approve them both.
Okay. Seconded? I think we all seconded. Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Congratulations to Emma and to Aiden. We're looking forward to having you.
And Emma, you do know you're going to be sitting up here.
Welcome aboard. And you have a name plaque.
You may not have it by next meeting, but you'll get one.
And they can take it with them, right? Or no?
Yes.
Yeah, you get to take it with you at the end.
You can take that to wherever you go after you leave us. It's a big, it's a great.
With perfect.
Yeah, with perfect.
It's a, it's a great conversation starter. It's a great conversation starter, yeah. Now, Emma, I'm looking forward to you joining us with Aiden.
Okay, moving forward. Kelly Foley, thank you so much for your patience.
Patience of a saint.
Yes.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Kelly Foley. I'm a teacher and coach at Sanford High School, and I am the advisor of the newly-formed SHS Travel Abroad Program. For those who may not have heard of us, last year we launched one of hopefully many travel abroad programs or opportunities, rather, that will be available to Sanford High School students during February vacation of their senior year. We're partnered with Education First, which is a Massachusetts-based education travel company. Our first trip is taking place this February with the Class of 2023. We currently have 70 students, parents, and chaperones that will be traveling through Italy for nine straight days. For those who are curious, we do have some social media pages, and our itinerary for that trip is on our Instagram page, which is SHS underscore abroad. Last year, the partnership and first destination was approved by the school committee, acknowledging all the great things that EF has to offer. So the logistical stuff includes a peace-of-mind travel policy that provides our group with flexibility during uncertain times, which has been really monumental. We also have monthly payment options to help keep these opportunities accessible to more students. We have 24/7 emergency support with EF and liability insurance for both schools and districts. And even more so, the good stuff we get with EF from the student perspective, of course, included in this trip are flights and hotels, all of the on-the-ground transportation, breakfast and dinner daily. We get lunch separate, which is out of pocket, but it's our opportunity to explore the local cuisine. We get our own personal tour directors, who's with us 24/7 from the moment we arrive to the moment we depart. Entrances to everything listed on our itinerary, we get several guided tours that are led by expert-licensed local guides to all of the historic and exciting places that we visit. So I'm here tonight to seek approval for the Class of 2024's destination. But again, ask as a reminder that we keep the location confidential, because I'd really like for the students to find out that location in kind of a reveal that I have planned this week. But if you review your packets in front of you, that top page is a handout that highlights the partnership with EF, some of the new or continued offerings that they provide for us, just kind of as a high-level element for why, why this partnership is so great. But the packet beneath it, the bottom of that page is kind of the name of the tour. And even more specifically, if you're looking for the good stuff, page eight, page eight has the itinerary and approximate price details, and it is in a similar range to the Class of 2023. The hope is, then, if we can gain approval for this, we can again roll out that location to the junior class this week and host a parent information night during homecoming week, after the games, of course, on Wednesday, September 28th, that's seven in the SPAC. So we're ultimately seeking approval for this location. And later down the road, I can give you some fun details or answer any questions you might have.
I'd make a motion to support this trip.
Seconded. All right, seconded by John. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to?
In cases of discussion, people might want to have it.
Okay, any discussion?
I don't have anything to ask, I was just curious.
So do you have students who approach you, you know, as you're making these general announcements, have you had to work one-on-one with students who are finding cost to be a pretty significant barrier? And in which way, in what ways are we assisting those students to be able to, you know, have equitable access to the opportunity?
Short-term goals, I have worked with some students who are joining us on this trip about some of their options. Something that EF provides for us, which is great, is different payment plan options. I'm not sure which page it is in your packet, but they can enroll in a manual payment plan where they can pay as they go. Maybe they need three months to make a decent payment rather than being able to do a monthly payment. So if a student wants to enroll on the trip, but they work more during the summers, they can enroll in the trip and save some of their earnings and make a bigger payment in longer chunks. Whereas for others, a smaller monthly payment might be better offer them. So it allows them to have a little bit of choice and flexibility in when they're, and how they're making their payments. I'm also presenting this a month and a half, two months earlier than I was able to last year, which provides more months to make those payments, which lowers the ultimate monthly cost. EF has an early enrollment discount, so if we can get students to enroll within the first 48 hours of this trip, they save $200, which is a huge cost savings. And we have fundraising opportunities where students are, they have a tour donation page where they can seek during the holidays, or we help kids write letters, write emails, contact their families, and ask if anyone would like to donate to their personal donation pages. We, as a group, have been doing a lot of fundraising to help get transportation to and from the airport to save for tour guides and bus drivers. So some of those extra added costs, we're doing fundraising on our own. And long-term, we would love to continue fundraising and hopefully be able to provide some scholarship opportunities where students might be able to submit an essay or a video application where we have the opportunity to provide some assistance for students, maybe utilize some corporate sponsorships. Right now, it's almost like we have to focus on what we can see right in front of us, but I think the more planning and the more experience we gain, the more opportunities we'll be able to provide so that more students can attend the trip.
Kelly, just a quick question. I know we've approved this before, as you said, but with COVID, did we miss a year? Did it?
My original plan, I think I was on the proposal the week before we shut down in 2020. So my first attempt was to take the Class of 2022 that just graduated. But due to the pandemic, we pushed that back, so the Class of 2023 is the first group.
And that's the one that's going to be going?
And that's the one that we're going on this February. So hopefully, again, more long-term. I would love to come back in the spring after Italy and show you the trip, kind of create a presentation.
That's where I was going.
Similar to how elementary just did here, I would love to be able to show you that, maybe provide you with some financial information. You can see our progress with fundraising and progress in terms of accessibility for students. And then perhaps present future locations even sooner so that students have even more months to be able to pay for this trip so that it's even more accessible. So I didn't want to put too many trips in advance before I've gone on one, so, but I'm also going on a training through EF in January to help prepare for this trip as well, safety-wise, preparation-wise, which makes me feel even more confident in being able to run this trip safely.
And how many faculty go?
For every six enrolled travelers, a faculty chaperone is added. So we've got 10, 10 faculty enrolled, right? Or sorry, nine enrolled as chaperones. We still have one more we need to add.
Any other questions? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in favor?
Great, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Yay.
Congratulations, Emma.
Can I just say thank you for bringing this to our district? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, now we are going to hear from Steve Bucier. Crisis Management Plan.
Beth, is this going to go up here? Okay.
Before you start, when I looked at it, it was 124 pages. The crisis, is this the crisis plan?
Yes.
You're not going over the whole thing, are you?
No.
Thanks.
I do have a PowerPoint, but I'm not going over the whole thing, no.
If you are, you've got about an hour.
We want to keep it confidential, too, to the, to the bad people.
So you did receive the link to the crisis plan in your weekend memo. It is 124 pages, so there's a lot to it. I'm going to try to give you a brief 60-second version of what the framework of the crisis plan is, and then give you an update on some of the major things that were changed in the, in the plan. So the purpose of the Emergency Management Plan is to provide a framework of policies, procedures, guidelines, and organizational structure that enables the Sanford Schools and its community partners to effectively mitigate against, prepare for, respond to, and recover from all emergencies and disasters involving the Sanford School Departments and its schools. So it's a general framework for response. We cannot plan for every situation that may happen, you know, the what-ifs, so it's a general framework. And as we, as you reviewed the plan, there's also that common sense. We have a plan, we have procedures and routines that we follow, but then there is that common sense that does play into what we're trying to accomplish. If we look at the goal, the goal of the plan is to ensure the safety of all members of the Sanford community, and to preserve the well-being of the Sanford Schools, and continuity of education through a rapid, coordinated, effective response to and recovery from emergencies and disasters. Now, when we think of emergencies, there's a whole, you can think of it as a spectrum of emergencies. You could have as simple as we have, it could be a small fire, to a bus crash, to, we talked about earlier this evening, it could be a violent critical incident, it could be a natural disaster, and so there's a whole gamut of what could happen as we move through this. So there's four parts to our plan. The first part is mitigation and prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. Mitigation and prevention is what the Sanford Schools and community can do to reduce or eliminate the risk to life and property. Preparedness is a process of planning for likely or worst-case scenarios. Response is the steps the Sanford Schools and community partners will take during an emergency. And then recovery, how the Sanford Schools and community partners will restore the learning and teaching environment after an emergency. So if we look at mitigation and prevention, mitigation and prevention is required taking inventory of the dangers in and around each of the Sanford School Department buildings and identifying what to do to prevent and reduce injury and property damage. According to FEMA, the goal of mitigation is to decrease the need for response as opposed to simply increasing response capability. So if you think about mitigation and prevention, that's where our school safety team, our school safety committee really comes into play. One of the major updates that was made to this plan is the safety audit. The school safety audit is designed to assess the safety conditions in each public school to identify and if necessary, develop solutions for physical safety concerns, including building security issues, and to identify and evaluate any patterns of student safety concerns. The proactive process will help ensure that students can achieve their learning potential within a safe and secure environment. And so the school audit we use comes from Virginia, and that audit was updated in 2016. And this is an annual audit that is done by our school administrators and our head custodians. In fact, at our safety committee meeting this afternoon, that audit was handed out. And so they will go back to their schools and they will look for, to assess their students. And so, they will go back to their schools and they will look for, to assess their schools in different areas to see how we are doing. Some of the big things that have come out of this safety audit are things such as school cameras. Are there areas in our schools where we don't have a camera or need a camera? Are there doors that need to be locked, there's signage? We have made tremendous strides with new construction in regards to our facilities, but this is a tool that will help refine that for us. So, that was a major, major change in our crisis plan. Another major update in this section had to do with a lot of our policies. When we look at our weapons violence and school safety policies, student discrimination, harassment, hazing, bullying, all those policies, all of them were updated, so that information has been updated. And then, looking at our social-emotional learning curriculum, second step was always there, but we've added second step into, character strong into that SEL portion, and then our use of restorative practices. So, really taking into account of what are we doing to support our students' mental health in our schools as well as policies to enforce those. As we look at preparedness, that's broken into five different areas. Emergency planning, leadership teams, and the incident command system, emergency supplies and equipment, training and exercises, and other communication. So, we've done a lot of work in terms of the incident command system. Earlier this evening, I mentioned that our building leadership teams had met. They really have looked at that, looked at the roles and the responsibilities of those team members. And so, this section of the plan has been updated as well. In that, I didn't mention this earlier this evening, but we've also looked at our evacuation sites. We have some new facilities in new locations, so we're looking to update our evacuation sites. Where's that first location we will go to? And then, what is that second location? And then, developing partnership agreements with those locations so we know what's expected if we were to have a critical incident. Going back, under C, emergency supplies and equipment, also in this section, we need to look at what are those to-go bags, an emergency situation? What do we need to take from our buildings, take with us? And so, we're doing some of that work at the Safety Committee with Joe Jordan and Paul Goldsmith to refine that, so. The responses, the steps the Sanford Schools and community partners will take during an emergency. And as mentioned earlier, this is a major, another really in our response section, we've made some adjustments in terms of that violent critical incident. What are we going to do if that happens? And expanding on that lockdown procedure to include evacuate and counter. And so, that language has been updated in our crisis response plan. Other than that, you'll notice at the, at the beginning, there's a lot of phone trees and phone numbers. And so, all of those have been updated, our alarm phone trees have been updated. And then, there were some things throughout the plan in terms of just cleaning up our language with our schools. It's no longer Sanford Junior High School or Sanford Middle School and Sanford Pride. And then, some other minor language changes happened throughout the document, but nothing really that was content, changed content. So, those are basic, basic updates that were made to our crisis plan. Coming into, if you were to ask me from an outsider, how is the Sanford Schools' crisis emergency, emergency plan? I think it's pretty strong. We have some good coordination going on with the Police Department, the Fire Department, they're working together. They're part of our crisis team, our Safety Committee. So, I think this plan was developed about maybe 15 years ago with safe schools, healthy students. And so, the framework was there. So, I think we're in good shape. And so, those are the recommendations that I have for you for changes in regards to our plan. Any questions?
Questions?
I do, I just, just one. It actually was when they were, one of the principals, I think it was Mrs. Edmund, brought up the lockdown drills. Is that something that is communicated to the parents beforehand or after the fact? And I just say that because I feel like I read somewhere a parent kind of wishing that they had had been given the heads-up or know to talk, like if it gets brought up at school. I know the high school kids have done this before, but maybe more the elementary school? I, I'm just asking.
That's a good question. As an elementary principal, I tried to communicate with my families after.
Yep.
After, today we had a drill. Sometimes I communicated in my newsletter ahead of time in the fall. But it is something, you bring up a good point. We probably want to communicate that to families after we've had our drill.
Yeah.
Coming up.
Just because if they come home, they're like, what?
Some of them are, some of them are planned. And so, this first one is very much planned. And so, students, staff are aware, they're going to, they've been talking with their students that this is going to happen. And so, there is some preparing of them. Other ones may not, they may be unannounced. That's what I'm looking for, unannounced with that.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion to adopt the crisis management plan as presented. Seconded, Amy seconds it, all in favor? All in favor?
I just want to add kudos to Steve. He's talked about, this isn't something that just happens overnight. This has been ongoing, and it's the collaboration of a lot of people working together to be able to come and make that. You've seen that be a point of emphasis and a point of focus for us. And it's going to continue to be. As we, this isn't just something that you look at early in the year and you check it off the to-do list and move on. The way the world is these days, these are ongoing things that we're going to be practicing and continuing to work and evolve so that we can make sure that our schools continue to be safe.
Cheryl Fournier. Do you want me to read all the recommendations first and then?
Just looking at, is it best if we read the recommendations, Cheryl, and then you give up some background information? Would that work best?
Doesn't matter. I can just go through each one as you say them. Do you want to do that way?
I would.
First and second, and then I say something, or do you want me to do it first?
Pretty straightforward. I would take them all as one and make a recommendation, accept them, I mean.
Yeah, I've done this, the format is exactly the same as last time. Gave you a history in the beginning of the memo and then created how I came up with the numbers for this time. So, I can just go through the second part. I mostly did the history so that you have it there, so you can remind yourself what we've done before. You want me just to go through real quick? It's up to you guys.
Just thinking for time purposes.
Yeah. Okay, so, real quick. I did a special education, came in at, we had a budget of 800, 8,879,124, where the actual expenses came in at 8,868,622. That leaves 10,502 that we'd like to move to the reserve.
Okay.
Then, the second one, capital improvement plan. We had a budget of 350,975, and we had actual expenses of 349,929, leaving 1,046 left to put into reserves. Health insurance, same thing, 7,528,314. And the actual expenses were 7,253,270, moving 275,044 into reserves.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve reserving the 10,502, 1,046, and 275,044 for all the funds that?
Yeah, you have to do them each individually, please.
I do, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Recommendation to approve reserving 10,502 into the Unexpected Special Education Cost Reserve Fund?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I do, actually.
Okay.
I, I'm just curious, with this money, would that be because we don't, have not filled all of our ed tech positions? Had we filled all of our ed tech positions, this would not be here?
We only had $10,000, which is not even one position
No, I.
left on that one for special ed.
Right.
It was very small, just, just probably some supplies or something came in slightly under budget, or somebody picked a different health insurance. So, some of it is probably an empty ed tech, but then the health, somebody picked a family over a single, which would have an increase in cost.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read that.
So, it's a little bit of everything.
Looking for a motion? Yeah, okay. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, recommendation to approve reserving 1,046 into the Capital Reserve Fund, Health Insurance Reserve Fund. No, Capital Reserve Fund. Okay, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? And last recommendation to approve reserving 275,044 into the Health Insurance Reserve Fund? Seconded? Any?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? No? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Okay, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is the Legacy Foundation is moving forward a naming rights to name the Margaret Chase Smith Elementary School Gymnasium after longtime teacher, Margaret Chase Smith phys ed teacher and Sanford graduate, Rich Wilkins. And so, this is something that we, as Rich unfortunately passed away just over a year ago at this time. And so, as the Legacy Foundation has put together a campaign to be able to go back and do that. And the funds that are being raised from this are going to be used restricted for use, and that will be to help all of our elementary school physical education programs purchase equipment. And that equipment would be not your basic supplies that we would cover in every budget, but these would be some of the additional funds to be able to use for equipment. A lot of that would be stuff to be outdoors in doing that. So, the Legacy Foundation is planning, with the anniversary coming up of Rich's passing, there's going to be a recognition planned for the homecoming football game coming up in a couple of weeks, as well as a ceremony for the family at Margaret Chase Smith School and invited friends. And as Principal Halassey said earlier, also helping be able to recognize for their student body as well. So, in order for those things to happen, we put forward the recommendation to accept a donation from the Legacy Foundation and prove their request to name the Margaret Chase Smith Elementary School Gymnasium, Rich Wilkins Gymnasium, as presented.
Looking for a motion? John, seconded. Amy? All in favor? All in favor? We don't have any old business tonight, resignations, retirements, staff appointments, and staff transfers and staff nominations.
So, no resignation or retirements to announce. As far as staff appointments go, this evening, we have all of the Schedule C and Schedule D from the collective bargain agreement appointments to go in. Those are very, all the various stipend positions that are listed there. They go on for
Four?
Almost, almost, over five, almost five pages. So, if it's okay, I will, I'm willing to read all of those this evening. If people please, but if not, I'm also willing to take a motion for all of those as they are presented in your packet.
In the old days of town hall meetings, we used to say waive the reading. So, right, Jonathan?
Okay, so, we're waiving the reading?
Waiving the reading.
Okay, we're waiving the reading.
And they, and they don't need approval because they are appointments with that. Staff transfers, I do have one to announce. That's Samantha Farley moving from an ed tech at Sanford Middle School into a long-term substitute position in the Life Skills Program at Sanford Middle School. And no other, no other nominations to announce. So, no recommendation needed there, no action taken. That will lead us to policies and procedures.
I have one policy for you tonight, it's an existing policy that has had some edits. Policy JL, Student and Staff Wellness. Each local district participating in the National School Lunch Program and/or School Breakfast Program is required to develop a wellness policy that is compliant with the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Final Rule of 2016. The proposed changes reflect current statistics and brings our policy into compliance with the requirements. So, I'm just going to give you a synopsis of what those requirements are. The first section of the policy talks about school committee recognitions. And in that section, the statistics that are included there have been updated to reflect current up-to-date statistics. In the National Standards Section, it has been updated to reflect the new federal smart, smart snack guidelines that regulate what can be sold during the school day and during extended school day hours. The Physical Activities Section has been updated to reflect current main state law. Current main state law prohibits using recess as a discipline policy in our schools. In the Other School-Based Wellness Activities Section, the word option was added to fundraising, parties, and celebrations. So, that section reads, "The district will ensure that fundraising efforts and celebrations are supportive of healthy eating and physical activity in students, parents, school staff, and community members. Bringing food and beverages to school for parties and celebrations are asked to provide healthy food options and/or beverages or non-food options." And so, the word option was added into that section. In terms of the Implementation Monitoring and Assessment Section, it was added in there, the requirement of that our policy be reviewed every three years. In addition to that, some other minor changes were made. Sanford Junior High School was changed to SMS, Sanford Middle School. And I recommend the first reading of this policy. So, are there any questions?
I can go back to my earlier comment. When I think of excessive caloric calorie intake, I mean, there is a place on one of our properties that does promote a regional brand of high-caloric coffee intake that I want to take a look at.
So, what do you?
Let me just say it. I mean, I think of the drinks that Oma Joe sells, and they're branded, they're branded on our property. A lot of, coffee's an addictive product, so I drink it every day, too. So, but I think on school grounds, I wonder if that's what we should be promoting. We say we're not supposed to be.
Right. Right, good point. Recommendation to accept the first reading of Policy JL as presented? So moved, second motion? Okay, thank you, Jen. All in favor? All in favor? No items for future agendas, next is calendar announcements.
Sure. Coming up, as I mentioned earlier, our next, Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center Schedule Advisory Committee meeting is this Wednesday at 2:30. The Wellness Committee will be meeting next Monday, the 26th, at 3:30. We're also looking to schedule a executive session for a student disciplinary hearing next Monday, the 26th. Looking to do that at 5 o'clock because that'll work around the open house that's going on next Monday, the 26th for Sanford Community Adult Education in their new location. They'll have two sessions for that open house on the 26th between 3:00 and 5:00, and also 6:00 and 8:00. And then, our two school committee meetings in October. We're looking at Monday, October 3rd, Monday, October 17th. We also will be looking to have a school committee workshop in October about the high school and SRTC schedule. And also, just letting people know that October 7th, Friday, is a Teacher in Service Day, so there'll be no school for students, but that'll be a Teacher in Service Day. That's when all of our SRTC teachers are participating in their statewide CTE conference. And at our October 3rd meeting, we'll present, give you an overview of what that day's going to look like for the Sanford staff. So, that's calendar announcements.
Okay. Amy, did you want to say?
Well, I'm just wondering, I didn't know that we have talked about having workshops and doing one school committee meeting. I'm just wondering, as I'm looking at October, if perhaps we do that workshop with the scheduling on, perhaps on the 17th of October? It was just something to think about, but.
Could be a consideration, sure.
Yep.
I have future agenda items.
Okay.
Sorry.
Amy? Future agenda?
I would love for us to talk about on one of the next agendas, I would actually say the next agenda, about adding on, and I would like to propose adding on a special ed advisory council, much like we have for the pre-K program, SRTC, as well as Performing Arts Center. I just feel, given a lot of, you know, the complexity, the amount of staff, and a lot of the laws that come down from the state, and how we, with an advisory council, how we could better serve the district, but multiple districts, by having a council that is kind of representing the special ed department. I have, you know, more, but given the time right now, I'll save it for the meeting.
Thoughts?
I too support the creation of that. I would find it incredibly helpful, moving into budget season, to have a better working knowledge of special ed, and given how many students in our district our special ed department services, I want to be a helpmate to that particular branch of our system, so I too would support that.
Okay. Any thoughts, John, Jonathan?
Just real quickly, when would you want to actually have that as a working committee? If that's the direction we would go?
I mean, going along with what Jen just said, I think it would be super helpful. I mean, I think, you know, when we had the open, the first day back at school, and I think it was you that actually said, look and see the amount of special ed employees, it is quite a large portion of our district, and knowing that a lot of the ESR funds are, you know, could potentially be going away with this next budget season, that I do think that the sooner, the sooner the better. Before January, for sure, and I would actually say October, November, December, that we have those meetings starting to go, so that we have.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking is because obviously, we're going to have two new school board members.
Yep.
Come January, so I just wasn't sure if you wanted to do it with having new members coming on, and maybe being part of that committee, or that?
I think, given, my opinion is, given how busy, busy it is, January, February, and March, with all of the meetings, I think, starting, having the advisory council and these conversations with all of us right now, and then we would have the three of us to pass along to the new members to help with the budget season, because we start right up in January, so I don't think we could fit in any more meetings.
My recommendation would be add it on the October 3rd agenda as an item. I think we'd want to invite Special Education Director Stacy Bissell back, and be able to have a conversation so that that can be able to be discussed and determine if that's the route that we want to go. We can be able to put that in action, I agree, sooner, rather than waiting until January. I think we'd want to be able to get out in front and do that.
Yep, I would say I agree, too. I would find it very helpful to really understand for budget season.
I could see that, I could see it evolving, in the sense of starting it, but, you know, some conversations, the specifics in terms of membership and those types of things, I think are, obviously, I could see it evolving and expanding, but I think it's important for us to get it started and get it going.
And just for the general public, there's a lot, it's, it's, there are many states that actually require every district to have an advisory council. Maine is not one of them yet, Massachusetts is, and given that I work in Mass, there's a lot of conversations that is given in my workplace about it, so I think we could benefit.
Okay, so we're going to add it to the agenda for next meeting on October 3rd? Okay? Do we need to do a motion or anything?
No.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn? Yes? Okay. Seconded, approved. All in favor? All in favor?
8:18.
8:18.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.